Okay, it's six o'clock, we're waiting on the clerk. And so as soon as he arrives, then we can get started and there he goes. So, uh, that is great. Uh, Mr. Doyle, I need you to make me a co-host. Okay, we're gonna call to order the two hundred and thirty-third session of the tenth council. Study session, June first, twenty twenty-one. Roll call, Mr. Doyle.
Carter. Miller.
Councilwoman Gloria Miller, City of Pontiac. Remotely.
Edela.
Councilwoman Mary Peetla attending remotely from the city of Pontiac.
Ramsky.
Attending remotely from the city of Pontiac.
Taylor Burks.
Doc, you got your mute on.
Taylor Burks. Okay, correct her. Waterman.
Patrice Waterman, City of Pontiac, Oakland County.
Williams.
Yes, uh, present, attending remotely from the greatest city in the world, Pontiac, Michigan.
Taylor Burks. Hey, uh, Mr. President, you have a, uh, call.
Okay, all right, um, I need you to make me a co-host, Mr. Doyle. Okay, I need a motion to excuse, uh, Councilwoman Taylor Burks until she returns.
And Carter. And Carter.
And pro tem Carter.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing now roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Petola.
Yes.
Schramsky.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Call Doc's name again, I thought I saw a mute herself.
Taylor Burks.
Okay, all right, members excused, uh, all right, I am going, uh, to take a point of privilege to, uh, recognize.
Approve it.
But, yeah, well, oh, yeah, we need to approve the agenda, um, is, uh, is there any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, yes.
Is there an amendment to the agenda?
I believe you wanted to make amendment to the minutes.
Right, because you sent it out the second time, I didn't know. I don't need to make amendments to the minutes, I need to know if we have the ordinance in the agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, I would like to remove items number three and four, uh, from the agenda. Last week, we spoke in detail about making sure there was a HUD presentation, um, before they came back, um, with the agreement of, uh, Mr. Gibbs at the time.
I can't hear you.
Oh, Taylor Burke, oh, I'm sorry, can, can you say where you're attending the meeting from, um, Dr. Taylor?
Excuse me?
Can you say where you're attending the meeting from? Are you attending the meeting from?
Pontiac, Doris Taylor Burks, Pontiac, Michigan.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Uh, yes.
Mayor Waterman.
Yes.
Uh, before you take these items off the agenda for the reason you stated, uh, because of the way you have set up, I don't, you know, Matt, Matt Gibb is the presenter on this and I don't know that he doesn't have the information that you would ask for because I can't tell whether he's here.
Uh, he's not, he's, he's, he's not here, Madam Mayor, he's not an attendee at this point. So, here he comes, he's raising his hand now, so he just jumped on, so, uh, if we can let Mr. Gibbs speak for himself, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Gibbs.
Oh, um, do you want him to, to the agenda item when it comes on?
No, not at all, I don't wanna, uh, what I'm saying to you is, we asked for a presentation from HUD to be there, if they're here today to present, then that's good, if not, we need to take it off the agenda.
Council President, if I can make a point of work around it.
Yep, all right.
So, it, it was placed on tonight's work-study session with an understanding if it would not be able to be added to next week as an action item because of the council rules. Uh, and just as an update, we, we have made contact with HUD, uh, HUD has asked for a specific request form that has been uh, to them where they can appoint a representative and, uh, and, and beyond that, they've really deferred and relied upon the, uh, the, the work that we've been doing with Oakland County, and so there's not a HUD representative available, but in lieu of just removing it from the agenda, if it could be simply, um, deferred to next week procedurally, then that would give me the attempt to work with HUD to attempt to get somebody there, because next week it would be put on the agenda. Uh, and then once it's removed, how long would we take? So that's the reason it's placed on your agenda in hopes that we could have had a HUD representative, but it's just a, it's been a process because of the holiday weekend.
Okay, um, uh, is there a motion to defer items three and four, uh, to next week's agenda?
Ooh, support.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing now roll call.
Edela.
Yes.
Schramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Big J, it's no names, Mr. President.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Yes. So moved.
I'll take the move from Petola to support from Taylor Burks, any discussion? Seeing now roll call.
Schramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller. Miller.
Yes.
Edela.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
Okay, um, so, agenda is approved, I'm gonna ask for a point of privilege to recognize Mr. Ringo.
So moved.
Support.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Ringo. All right, go ahead, Mr. Ringo. Okay, I'll approve the minutes and then, uh, wait for him, uh, to chime in. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any discussion?
Mr. Clerk, or Mr. President?
Yes.
I did, there was one thing I did wanna mention because. Hello?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I.
Let go, let Dan go.
Okay, well, it's a move and support on the floor, so if you can continue.
Dan, just a second, please. Um, what, during the minute, or during the minutes last week, when we did the Public Safety Subcommittee, I mentioned that we have an ordinance that was approved by two sergeants, two lieutenants, two attorneys, DPW and the captain, and that we were gonna place it on for a first reading tonight, but that was not recorded in any of the minutes, so I just wanna share that because it was said last week, so that's why we have the ordinance this week, thank you.
Okay, all right, Mr. Ringo?
Oh, hold on, hold on. I'm sorry, you had to take the vote.
Yeah, roll call.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter, oh, I'm sorry, Miller.
Uh, yeah.
Petola.
Yes.
Schramsky.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
Okay, thank you, uh, minutes passed, uh, Mr. Ringo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you for this moment I, that I'd like to take to thank the city of Pontiac for the last two years. It has been an extreme pleasure serving the citizens and I hope that the city is better off for my service because this community deserves nothing short of the best. To all of my colleagues who I enjoyed getting to know over the past two years, I wanna say thank you, thank you for lending a hand when asked, and I hope I was able to do the same. No one outside of that group fully knows what it's like to work there, so my prayers for your wisdom and strength remain in effect. To the council, I want to thank each of you for treating me with respect, and even in moments of disagreement, I felt your differences were based on your conviction to represent the interests of the people who placed you in leadership. I will miss the meetings and the uniqueness of each council member. Councilwoman Miller, I will miss your passion and making sure the people of District Five knew that you had their back. I will miss Councilwoman Petola's humor and strong support of public safety as well as DPW. I will miss Councilwoman Taylor Burks trying to get on Zoom calls in the beginning. But I also appreciate her star support and common sense, and I knew if I could make it make sense to her, I was headed in the right direction. I will not miss Councilwoman Schramsky's many emails and crying about work orders for District Two, but I will miss her diligence for getting the work done for her constituents. I will miss the grace and strength of Councilwoman Waterman and the tough questions she would ask. Along with Dr. Burks, we knew if we made it make sense to her, we were heading in the right direction. I will miss Pro Tem's research and all his investigative skills and the resolutions we brought before council. Yeah, oftentimes, he served at the last bastion of approval many times, and I'm glad that he knew that DPW was never trying to do anything other than serve the best interests of the city. And I will miss President Williams, hello, everybody, I say hello, everybody, and reporting from the center of the universe, Pontiac, Michigan. That says volumes about how you truly feel regarding the people that in the area you represent. Uh, to Mr. Maxi, my former, my fellow Air Force veteran, to Ms. Maddie McKinney Hatchet and the clergy I got a chance to interact with, thank you for lending your wisdom and experience when the moment presented itself. And finally, I have to thank the incredible men and women of the Department of Public Works who embraced me from the beginning and continuously showed me day in and day out that they are hands down the absolute best in the business at what they do. Any success I experienced, accolades I received from the community or the council is because of their integrity, hard work, and dedication to the citizens. I wanna especially thank Eric Brim, Bob Shelton, and entire highway maintenance crew, Vince Jimenez, Mindy Wesley, Matt Landy, Vic Stevens, Shanita Cody, Abdu Siddiqui, former director John Ballant, it's very important to acknowledge Larry Earl Robinson and my right-hand man Al Cooley, who is the engine of the DPW vehicle. But most importantly, I would like to thank Jack Cady, who more than anyone made my work the most human, most reflective, and the most insightful. I am a better man because of my experience in Pontiac, and for, for that, I'm forever, it's his friend. So with that, Mr. President, I thank you for this moment, and I really do appreciate the time, and I hope to be around soon, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I will open it up for my colleagues, uh, if they would like to say something to Mr. Ringo.
Mr. President, if I might.
Yep, uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Waterman, and then Councilwoman Taylor Burks.
Probably out of all the people who have worked at this city, I'm gonna miss you the most, Mr. Ringo. Because any time I ever, 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 ever called upon you, you came through. The city is at a loss without having you at the helm at DPW. So I want you to know, if you ever need me for anything, I'm still just a phone call away. I hope you keep the same number where I can, um, stay in touch with you, uh, and I wish you the very best at whatever you do. Take care and God bless you.
Okay, Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sick, I am very, very sick. I have been crying and crying because you know that you and I have had some good times, and I'm gonna miss that, but keep your head up because God is in this and he's gonna do some big things for you, Mr. Ringo, because you are a real, real person, not nobody that's stuck up on their, uh, work, but you are a real person, and I'm definitely going to miss you. God bless you, and I will be staying in touch with you so that we can have some real talk, bye.
Okay, Councilwoman Miller, then Councilwoman Schramsky.
Good afternoon, Dan. You know, Dan, you know, when you first came here, I get, I think, I look back and we are alike. We, we passionate about what we do, we do what we say we're gonna do, and I've grown over the years with such respect for you. I, I think out of anybody ever been with this administration, it hurt me, it hurts me to see you go, because you are a professional. There hasn't been that one thing that you have, I've asked for District Five, you haven't done for me. I, I don't, frankly, I don't think you could be replaced, no time soon. And, uh, I just wanna let you know that I will always remember what you did, and you know, this is, this is politics and this is how it do, but remember, what goes around come back, you may come back one day, you never know. So, I, I just stay positive, and I'm gonna miss you, truly, a city of Pontiac gonna miss you, it's gonna be a couple weeks, everybody in the city gonna wonder what happened because they're gonna know you're gone, because your work speaks for itself, that's what I said always when engraving my, my tombstone, let my work speak for itself. And for me, you got the highest honors for me, Dan. Thank you and have a, enjoy, just, uh, God got bigger things for you, he moved. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Schramsky.
Well, I hope my constituents heard you say I send too many emails. But I have slowed down quite a bit, I haven't sent you too many, we're just getting to Google, I just need to do that. Uh, but thank you so much for all your responses and all your work, and I do really appreciate it. And I, I'm sure you really will miss all those emails, no, I'm just kidding, but I wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Okay, uh, who's next? Yeah, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Petola, I'm gonna call on you, Madam Mayor, after we get to the council people.
I wasn't gonna say too much, but anything, Dan, you're right, we have a lot of laughs together and I'm gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss those laughs. But I sent you a text message as to how I feel, and I'm gonna leave it at that, good luck, my friend. Oh, and the mayor's got something out here that you have given her, your resignation, um, her, this is, Mr. Ringo has not given me my formal notice of resignation, but we wish him well in the future.
That, that, as, as you would expect, that is not true, I gave it, the day I gave it, she asked me for it, when I told her I was resigning, I sent an email to her. I had to send it from my personal email because my public, my City of Pontiac email was cut off by the time I got back to my office, so I can forward that um, email that was sent from my personal email, if that's what's being circulated, that is not true.
Please be, send it to all of us so we all have it on record. Thank you, sir, I'm gonna miss ya.
Okay, any other council people, uh, Attorney Sharp?
So, Mr. Ringo, you know, I will, uh, I will miss you, we started off with a rocky start, but I, I think we were able to, um, build a really good working relationship, and I, I think that you added a lot of value to DPW into the city of Pontiac, but obviously, there are bigger and better things for you, and I wish you the best.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Doyle.
Hmm, thank you, um, I miss you too, um, Mr. Ringo, um, I'll just share a quick story, um, the trash man had missed my, uh, trash, I called, uh, Mr. Ringo and it was taken care of immediately, so, uh, good luck to you.
All right, Mayor Waterman.
Yes, I've been myself to others, um, Mr. Ringo has, uh, served in this position of DPW, he was my choice, and, uh, council did finally, I'll receive him as a director, acting director. Uh, it, uh, took me quite by surprise when last, so, week, Mr. Ringo, last Friday, as a matter of fact, uh, Mr. Ringo came in and said, uh, uh, it's a huge job, and, uh, he, uh, he served, served the city during the time he had chosen to serve, and, uh, he told me that he was going to move on. And, uh, so I asked him to just give me the formal notice of resignation, but he, I'd hoped he would continue on for a period of time so we could make the transition, uh, but he was, uh, maybe he sent that to me afterwards. But anyway, we wish him well, uh, as we do anybody who served the city of Pontiac, and I do want them to let them know his services were well received, as you've all said, uh, also, one of the last things, uh, he has done in his terms of his tenure was to give me a price cost for the, uh, council, one of the, uh, the, uh, ducks cleaned in city council chambers, and so the price he came back with, uh, Friday was fifty thousand dollars, so, uh, have yet to present that to him, but that's one of the duties that he diligently did. It's a very stressful job being DPW director, even people calling this weekend for porta-potties that hadn't been delivered, uh, DPW, so I understand that's a big, uh, job for somebody to handle, and he has certainly put us into a, a good such situation, so I would like to say farewell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, Mr. Ringo, thank you, uh, I'll never forget, uh, the night, uh, we were talking about the snow ordinance and changing that, and, uh, we went back and forth, I will appreciate not only, uh, your passion for the job, uh, but your willingness, uh, to work under pressure situations. So, uh, I wish you well on your future endeavors, if you need a letter of recommendation, uh, from a council president, you got it to December thirty-first, and then you'll have to get it from the next council member, but, uh, definitely, uh, let me know, uh, whatever we can do to help you in this city, uh, you will truly be missed, and I know, uh, the one thing is, the department is on much better footing, uh, now than it was in the past, and so thank you for your effort and your work and making that transition, especially through, uh, everything that's happened in the city, so just wanted to let you know, um, that I do appreciate, uh, your willingness to work, uh, even if we came from different viewpoints. So thank you so much, uh, for your service, so, Pontiac, please, uh, miss, uh, uh, send Mr. Ringo a fond, uh, farewell, thank you, Mr. Ringo.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, God bless, I'll be around.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ringo, we're gonna move on to item number one, uh, I think it's one be on the agenda, which is the ordinance, uh, Mr. Clerk.
Well, well, actually, uh, Mr. President, public comment.
Oh, okay, let's go to public comments, set your timer for three minutes, and then I will, um, call on the hands that are raised if you see them. Okay, um, do you have a timer set, Mr. Doyle? Uh, you muted.
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, our first hand that I see is Renee Beckley.
Can you hear me now?
Let's go ahead, Ms. Beckley.
I'd like to address that vindictive and disgusting action to fire Devin Green at the Pontiac Library, that she is the director, after alleged petty dispute with Melanie Rutherford. The fallen people voted to fire Devin, Melanie Rutherford, Hobart Phil Mick Maxey, Rosie Richardson, and Maddie Hatchet. Benita DeVall was absent, Perry Earl voted no against the firing of Devin. My question is, where are you going to find someone with that quality of education to replace Devin? Also, have you, uh, followed about the, uh, uh, the connection, uh, Devin has with the children and the parents who, uh, use the library? This action in the vote to fire Devin proves a lack of judgment. To my friends and former neighbors of District One, I say Sean Preston for counsel for District One. Melanie Rutherford, being honest and open as I can, my dear, this is not for you. Okay, you should use your talents on the musical stage. Now, to lobby or lobbyists, I see a disturbing tw- trend with two people who, who perceive to be the, uh, leaders of the people, Maddie Hatchet and Angela Powell, the current county commissioner. It appears that both promote projects against the residents who live in the area, uh, uh, and they, and when they disagree with it, they continuously promote a project that they do not want, such as FedEx and Stonegate and that marijuana complex at Glenwood Plaza. They both, both of these women, uh, uh, do, uh, do not live near any of these projects, but both go to the planning commission and speak on the positive that these projects should go there when the neighbors do not want them in the area where we either object to, a- and, and we don't know anything about the project. I ask, now I have to ask, Ms. Hatchet and Angela Powell, I mean, I have to ask, are you being rewarded monetarily or is something promised to you? Angela, I must tell you, beware because you may be violating state law because you are currently a city elected, elected official. Trying to put something controversial in the area where you live, Maddie Hatchet. Now, to the city council, do not turn Pontiac over to the drug culture. Watch what you are voting on and where it is placed, you, this marijuana is gonna be out of control and they gonna be running y'all. Do not turn Pontiac over to drug, I don't give them everything they want, I know I passed by one vote, if the people go to the moon for their drugs, put that in the industrial park, where those, uh, that Glenwood Plaza, I keep telling you, is too close to these houses, environment, do it by the smell, where the seeds travel, the toxic fumes travel, not go for a hundred feet, you need to do the whole area. We got, well, we, uh, five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred, a thousand feet smell the smell.
That's your time. Time.
Uh, before we call the next person, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Doyle, before we call the next person, um, the, uh, ordinance, uh, says that we cannot, uh, endorse candidates, um, or do anything political during public comments, you need to address the city council um, about city issues, and that's the purpose of public comments, um, so going forward, uh, there is no campaigning allowed during public comments because then we would have to allow, uh, not only the people who are running for office, but the people who are on the council, uh, to do that. That changed about four years ago, uh, because we had that, um, remember when, uh, people were wearing T-shirts to the council mem- uh, meetings? They could not do that, and so just letting people know going forward, um, that, uh, you cannot campaign, and, uh, we will also have the clerk publish, uh, that particular ordinance in the agenda for next week, uh, just so everybody can be clear on it, uh, as we go forward. Uh, okay, the next hand I see is Ricky Williams.
Yeah, so, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, council, I wanted to address, uh, the city clerk in regards to the, um, the rankings that came out for the past two districts, this is my second or third time calling in and in regards to this. Um, we, we need, as a public and as a community, we need to know why you are choosing these particular places and where they're going. we need to know why you are choosing these particular places and where they're going. Because the mayor is throwing you under the bus. The people of Pontiac, they're confused. They're just up in the air like, hey, why are we choosing these people? We don't know, no rankings. We, I mean, we don't know community benefits. We don't know job creation. We don't know community development. We don't know anything like that because everything is so tight lipped in the city. So, Mr. Clerk, to keep your credibility alive and also to doubt, to put away your doubters as the mayor and the other people in the city that are doubting this process, please let us know as a public, let us know why are you choosing these particular people? I understand they have a high score, but let us know job creation, let us know community development, let us know what they are bringing to the city and why you're choosing these people. If you do that, then this will be a fair and transparent process. Like you have stated, you wanted to run the whole time since the beginning, since back in twenty eighteen. We need a fair and transparent process, and by naming these things, we will get that. The community, the city needs to know, why are you selecting these particular people or places of where these particular provisioning centers are being located at? Without that, your credibility is, is down the drain. I just wanna be brief and just wanted to say that. Thank you so much.
Those, I don't see any more hands. Is there anybody else for public comment? Okay, I don't see anybody for public comment. We're going to close public comment then, and we're gonna move on to item, I believe, is one B in the, uh, agenda. Uh, who's presenting the ordinance for administration?
Um, that, now, Mr. President, this item was not presented by administration. Uh, it was, uh, put on to the agenda without my knowledge. I don't even know if I see, um, attorney has had a chance to review it as to form as, as required by the charter. So, I'm not prepared to, this whoever put it on the agenda can make a presentation.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, the city attorney wrote the ordinance.
Okay, well, I didn't know it was gonna be on the agenda. I'm not prepared to talk about it. So, whoever, um, if he put it on the agenda, then, uh, if you bring him, he may be here, so let him address it, please.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Pila, uh, did you ask for this?
I'll be, yes, I did, and I'll be more than happy to explain why.
Yes.
We had a meeting, and Dr. Taylor was at that meeting. It was a meeting between the police, and it was also a meeting with public safety, actually, is what it was, public safety leadership. And it was DPW, both Mr. Cooley and Mr. Ringo participated. And we were talking about how we have these trailers, these commercial vehicles that are parked on our streets, but we don't have an ordinance for which the officers are able, or the deputies are able to deal with it. So Sergeant Hunt found the original ordinance, and we sent it over to Attorney Chubb, who made the accommodations for the City of Pontiac. Um, Sergeant Hunt, Sergeant Law, Lieutenant Marsban, Lieutenant Ford, Captain Ewing, Dan Ringo, Al Cooley, and I, uh, we all, and, and also Dr. Taylor. We all talked about this. We all looked at this. We all decided it was something that needed to become an ordinance in the City of Pontiac. We had two attorneys. Um, Lieutenant Marsban is also an attorney, as well as, um, Mr. Chubb being the city attorney. So, we're asking that we allow this to be the first reading, which the clerk is going to, um, be the one to take care of that. We, we need something where we can take these commercial vehicles that are parked on our streets. We cannot ticket them. That includes the trailers, that includes the vehicles that are left on the streets that are commercial vehicles. And we have to address it, and it will be much easier to keep our streets clean to avoid the, um, use of drugs in these vehicles because some of those drugs are, some of those vehicles are used for drugs, um, both for usage as well as bringing in. And we also have the state trailers that people load up their junk and they leave it on the spot. Um, and it's, we have the instance where there is one over here on Short Street that went through abatement, and we actually asked, had to ask the judge for a court order so our abatement contractors can get rid of it because the gentleman doesn't wanna get rid of it. It's been there for ten years. So, I'm, I'm gonna ask my council colleagues if they would please support it. This was in your packet last week with the Public Safety Subcommittee reports. I mentioned it during the meeting, and I am now asking for your support on this. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Oh, no.
Support.
So, so actually, Mr. President, you don't need a, a motion for the first reading. This will constitute the, the first reading, um, and then I will publish it in the, um, newspaper, and you can take, uh, action if you so choose. Next week, in an ordinance regarding parking of commercial vehicles and other specified vehicles and equipment on residential streets prohibited, taxi cab exception, parking of commercial streets for one hour permitted exception, temporary parking, motor homes, pickup campers, and coupled trailer coaches on residential street.
Okay. So, we don't have to do anything else, right?
No.
Okay, awesome. All right, which brings us to item number five, which is a resolution to approve M dot resolution to, uh,
Sorry, it's the number two.
Oh, 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 yeah, oh, okay. Uh, item number two, resolution to approve broadcast upgrades with Comcast cable in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-seven cents and film tools in the amount of four, uh, hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars and zero cents to complete the transition from analog to fiber-based broadcasting services.
Mr. President?
Yes.
This is something we discussed in budget session, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what do we need to do? Can we, um?
You can suspend the rules if you want to vote on it.
Move forward on this one?
Uh, yeah, if the council chooses, yes.
Some move.
Support.
To suspend the rules.
Okay, roll call?
It was moved by Pila and supported by Schramsky?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Uh, no.
Miller?
No.
Pedala?
Yes.
Schramsky?
Yes.
Uh, Taylor Burks? Taylor Burks?
God.
I think she's muted again.
Yeah, I don't even see her on the listing. Do you see her, Mr. Doyle?
Um, let me see, I don't.
Not there.
Oh, I don't see her.
Okay.
So then that's only, uh, three yeas.
Hello?
Yes.
Councilwoman Waterman still did not vote.
I'm sorry, I thought I called, I thought I called you first, Councilwoman Waterman.
You called me for the subs, um,
Yeah, we, we're doing suspend the rules.
We still have to suspend them, yeah.
Yeah, so this is, is only three yeas and two nays to suspend the rules, so suspend the rules. The rules aren't suspended. You need votes.
Okay, uh, well, this will be on next week's agenda then. Okay, um, we're gonna move on to item number five, if you can read that, Mr. Clerk?
Item number five is a resolution to approve the updated M dot resolution form twenty-two oh seven B.
Yep, who's presenting from Public Works, Madam Mayor?
Works, we have, uh, should be Mr. Al Cooley. Uh, and I'm looking to see, I can't tell because he's a panelist, so if he's in the waiting room, you can let him in, or Mr. Siddiqui.
Yeah, I just made Mr. Siddiqui a panelist.
Okay.
Hello, Councilpeople. Yeah, so this is a form that M dot requires, uh, us to update, um, in, in advance of us requesting any other permission. It's, it's fairly standard, uh, procedure. And it's been, it's, it's been done every year in the past as well.
Is it time sensitive or can we vote on it next week?
You can, you can, you can, uh, defer it to next week.
Okay, okay, awesome. All right, which brings us to item number six, which is a resolution to approve contract extension for the right-of-way sign maintenance contracts and action traffic maintenance, Inc., through January first, twenty twenty-two.
Right, so Action Traffic is the contractor that, uh, provides our, uh, sign maintenance, so they, they replace the, you know, any damaged signs and so on and so forth. Um, they've been under contract for a couple of years. Last year, we put it, we put the contract out to bid again, and we didn't receive any response. Um, so Action Traffic has agreed to keep their prices, um, to hold their prices for them next year as well. So, we're requesting approval to extend their contract.
Okay, is this time sensitive?
This is more time sensitive, yes.
Okay, uh, is there?
Some move to suspend the rules.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Roll call on suspending the rules?
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Pedala?
Yes.
Schramsky?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Four yeas, one nay, suspend the rules.
All right, uh, is there a motion, uh, to approve, uh, resolution to approve contract extension for right-of-way sign maintenance contract with Maintenance, Inc., through January first, twenty twenty-two?
Some move.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? CNN, roll call?
Miller?
No.
Pedala?
Yes.
Schramsky?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Four yeas, nay.
Okay, which brings us to item number seven, which is a resolution to approve. Is that the correct spelling? I, I think that should be, is that Galway or is that, uh, street?
That's, that's Galway.
Actually, it's street.
Oh, wow, I've never been to that street.
It's off of Baldwin. It's the old Baldwin.
Okay, Galagoa Maintenance Agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County, uh, R C O C and the City of Pontiac for Galagoa Road?
So, Galagly Road is in the northwest corner of the city, um, just off of Baldwin. It's, uh, it's a gravel road. Um, so the, the Road Commission for several years has been, um, performing grading services on that road for us. Um, they have provided some updated, uh, pricing this year, and they're requesting a new res- new, uh, agreement. So, um, we are asking you to approve, uh, the mayor or the DPW director to sign the agreement with R C O C for grading services on Galagly. We do not have the capability in-house to do that, uh, maintain.
Okay.
The cost will, the cost will be sixteen fifty-three per year.
Okay, and, uh, we can vote on this next week?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. I've that.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman Waterman.
What was the, uh, what was the price before, and are these one-year contracts or, oh? Each year we have, what?
The last time, the last time this contract was approved was in two thousand and eight. So, since then, they've been keeping the same price. I think it was like, uh, sixty-some dollars per grading frequency. Now, it, this year, they've updated it to eighty-two dollars, um, and sixty-six cents per grading frequency.
And how often do they grade it?
Twenty, twenty times, um, per year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Waterman.
Uh, okay, the grading. How long is the contract for, Mr. Doyle? How long is the contract for?
The contract is only for one year, um, but it seems that they, they continue, at least for what happened last time is they, they, we got the two thousand eight contract, and then they just continued with the two thousand eight contract for, until now. Um, so now they've decided to update the pricing, um, and we'll see if they come back next year with new pricing or not.
And one more question. You may not know, uh, I, and I'm sure she will know. You, do you know who this is? Is that Randy Gomary?
Randy.
Brandon, okay. Yeah, I'll wait you next week. I wanna see what he has to say about it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, um, items number eight, nine, and ten are all, uh, received from the mayor. We're gonna adjourn this meeting at, uh, six forty-six P M. Have a great evening.
Thank you.